Good morning, everyone. We're ready to go. All right, good morning, everyone. Welcome to a special emergency meeting of the Select Board on Monday, February 12th, 2024. At, we're at 10:06 a.m. The item for discussion is the weather impact of the February 13th, on the February 13th, 2024 special town meeting ballot election. And we have several of our town staff here, and so if you could take that off. If it's acceptable to the board and the board, and if there's no objection, I'd like to ask in order, Mr. Milano, Mr. Berkeley, Mr. Mello, perhaps Mr. Hayden, and then Ms. Galvin to report on what, what, what facts they have, and what their recommendations are, if any. Is that acceptable to the members?
All right.
Yes.
All right. All right, so if we could start with Nick, if you could tee it up, and then we'll go to Chase, Peter, and perhaps Chris, and then to Sue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just overall, obviously, we have to worry about roads and just general access around town, as well as parking access and walking access at each of those locations. So Chase, if you could jump in in terms of your take on how the storm is going to play out, and where DPW feels it will be throughout the duration of the event.
Sure, yeah, good morning, everybody. Thank you for your time. So, yeah, so right now, we're in preparation mode for, you know, what looks to be a significant snow event tomorrow, Tuesday. It looks like conditions will probably deteriorate pretty rapidly right around 7:00 a.m., and it will snow pretty heavily till around 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. And then, as it stands now, it looks to be pretty much over by that point. So we're prepping for a full response from our both town staff and contractors to get the streets cleared during and after the event. We've canceled trash collection for Tuesday. Yeah, so the remaining week will run a one-day collection just to get those garbage trucks off the road, so they don't have to deal with the weather. We're looking at a pretty high tide at 2:00 p.m., so just under a 14-foot high tide is predicted for 2:00 p.m. tomorrow, so that will impact any of those areas that see tidal impacts for certain. Right now, I'm sure the question is, is can we be, how quick can we clean it up? And if things maintain the way they're forecasted right now, and the snow significantly stops around 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock, we'll still have a few hours of work to do. Roads are prioritized by how busy they are, so the main roads are kept clear, and then we work our way into the side roads following that. So there will be some time to get through everything. We'll stay throughout the duration of the night, though, until it's done, and I'm pretty confident we'll be in great shape for Wednesday.
Should speaking to Tuesday specifically, you know, midday at the height of the impacts, what will, what do you think the roads will look like generally?
Yeah, so when you see those one to two inch an hour intensities, everything kind of blankets over, it just can't be everywhere at once. So if we get three or four hours of that intensity, you know, you'll see some significant coverage on the roads, and snow will start to pile up, and it will take time just to catch up to that. So that, that critical kind of window, 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., is when they're talking about that high intense snow happening.
Thank you. Chris, Hayden, in terms of keeping facilities open, accessible, parking areas open, assuming schools are closed, can you give us the layout of what Tuesday might look like during the day of the election itself tomorrow?
Yeah, so our guys are going to be here at 6:00 a.m., and then we'll, and we have the custodial staff at each school. So sidewalks, pathways will be maintained during the day to the best of their abilities. We'll be able to send our staff to each location, either be Tucker, Callicott Cunningham, as needed, to help if there's any additional resources needed, parking lots. If it is a no-school day, which sounds like it could be, it'll help us immensely with the parking lot behind Callicott Cunningham to salt and to spread and keep those pathways open. So that's, we're ready to go. We feel confident that we can keep those parking lots at the schools and sidewalks clear, and at the COA as well for voting.
Thank you. I think that's it for the town.
Yeah, just one, one follow-up before we get to Town Council. Chris, what about Cunningham Hall?
Cunningham Hall is a private entity, so we, right now, do have, we have no hands-on over there. That's not to say if they need assistance, we could provide it. I'm just not sure, you know, I mean, we can help, we can help out there, but we don't do that hall on a, on a, any regular basis.
Mr. Wells?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I just want to make sure someone's, I had that in mind, because I noticed Cunningham is not here. People often forget that Cunningham, while on a, a partner in the voting, in the vote, in town voting, is a private entity. So, and I see Sue raised her hand, I'm so, I just want to make sure someone's going to have conversation, Mr. Kelly over there, so we say, wait, let's go on. That's all, thanks.
Sue, do you want to weigh in now, or do you want to wait for Peter?
Um, I just wanted to weigh in on Cunningham Hall. I have that conversation with Mr. Kelly, and his, he would not be able to maintain that with his current staff. However, he has offered to hire a company at the town's expense to keep that area clear and everything, realizing that DPW and Consolidated Facilities would be at their max. So that is something that we would have to consider doing.
Thank you, Sue.
Sure.
All right, if we could hear from Peter on legal options, and then we'll go to Sue with, with, to tell us what we need to do here.
Sure, so, thank you, Chair Zulis. The, the short answer is, if we wanted to move the date, it would require a court order. Anticipation, in anticipation of potentially needing to, to run into court today, I called ahead and spoke with the clerk's office and alerted them to the situation, and was told that they're, they'll be ready for us. There is a judge sitting there today who's available to, to consider this matter. And if, if it requires a hearing, it probably would be, it kind of depends. I think things are pretty fluid and flexible, but if there is a hearing on a different matter, one hearing apparently scheduled for 2:00 p.m. today, it probably would be after that, so perhaps 2:30 or so. And I, I requested that, I thought it would make sense, just logistically, to have it for efficiency purposes via Zoom rather than in person. I don't know that the court will allow that. I don't know what, it's totally up to the court, but the, the document that we would, we would file wouldn't include a defendant. It would just be a petition on the Select Board's behalf, of course, if, you know, provided that the Select Board wants to authorize it, to call upon the court's general equitable powers to move the date, and we would, you know, include in, in the proposed court order that we would file the relevant particulars. You know, you could, you could either assign a new date and ask for the court to, to extend the, the, the vote from a date certain, from, you know, tomorrow to a different date certain, like Wednesday, or you could frame it to allow the board to set a new date within a certain timeframe. It's, it's, it's kind of open-ended and flexible, so. But we would need a court to authorize changing the date.
Thank you, Peter. Town Clerk, Sue Galvin.
Thank you, Chair Zulis, and the other members of the Select Board. So I've had a conversation with our town administrator, Mr. Milano, and Mr. Mello, our Town Council. I've also had conversations with Michelle Tassanieri, who is the Director of Elections with the state. And so, given the, the magnitude of the storm, concerns that I would have of going forward is that the safety of our voters, first and foremost, going out into, you know, hazardous conditions, and also making sure that all of our voters who want to participate in the election have that opportunity, and it's, it's not deprived from them based on weather conditions. You know, my first, as of yesterday, coming into this, I would have said, absolutely, we should have this election. We're, we're planned for it and everything, but considering the, the, the conditions, and that DPW and Consolidated Facilities, I, I can't say that I think that we should move forward. I want to make sure that everybody who, who wants to participate is able to do so. We do have a great vote-by-mail participation. We had 3,000, I'm just trying to get my exact number. We had 3,228 applicants that we mailed ballots to. As of Saturday, we had 54% return those ballots. My staff is busy emptying our box and taking ballots from people, so I do anticipate that number to significantly increase. And we have had up through, again, Friday, about 133 people apply for absentee ballots over the counter. However, in order to get an absentee ballot, you must meet one of the three conditions set forth by law, one being that you are going to be out of town on Election Day, the other being that you are disabled and unable to make it, and the final one for religious purposes. You know, the weather does, is not listed as a valid purpose for people getting an absentee ballot. So if, in fact, we are changing, or you do determine that a different date would be provided, we would make note that the absentee ballot deadline would be extended. It would end today noon. Provided when Town Council was able to get to court, and a court agreed to allow this, any ballot that came in after 12, but before 5, would be treated as a provisional ballot, and once the court order came through, their ballots would go forward. I don't know if I answered all of the questions, but I am more than happy to answer anything you may have.
Thank you very much, Sue. That's very helpful. I'm sure there'll be questions. Why don't we just, I assume Mr. Hayden's hands up? Let's just go to Mr. Hayden, and then we'll go to comments or questions from the members.
Thank you. So we are, we will be able to handle Cunningham Hall, so we have a third plow, so we could dedicate a person to that, that area. So we'll be over at Cunningham School, and we can do the, the hall as well. So I just wanted to advise that we are going to be able to cover that.
Thank you, Chris. Comments or questions from the members? Mr. Wells, and then Ms. Musto.
So, having been intricately involved in writing many of the emergency plans for this town over the past decade and a half, what if we lose power? It's one of the things that is, I'm sure Matt and Clark knows, and Chris knows, is that as far as secondary power, definitely Cunningham Hall does not, COA does. I don't believe Cunningham, Callicott does. I'm not sure if the, I know the, the high school has life and health, right, Chris? I don't think it has operational generating capacity, does it?
So Callicott Cunningham has a generator, high school has a generator, Tucker does not have a generator. COA has a generator.
I knew the COA did. Cunningham Hall does not.
As, I'm not.
I confirm, I confirm that Cunningham Hall does not have a generator.
Okay, just a, I mean, a lot of times, people worry about, they think about plowing snow, pushing snow, cleaning sidewalks, but from what I'm looking at, this is a significant norista. The potential would say, it's heavy wet snow, and as Chase knows, whenever you get a heavy wet snow, you run the possibility of significant power outages. And that's, I think it's just the common of us to talk about it first versus not put it on the table, and then let's say, oh, oh, look what happened. Just, just, just a point, thanks. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Musto?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I appreciate all the input from everybody, because, you know, obviously, we have the professionals on the line that, you know, do this kind of work between Chase and Chris, and, and Sue, you know, finding out all about this and what options there are. So I do appreciate all of that. Quick question, have we, I'm just wondering, have we done this before? And how will we get the messaging out for people that it's going to be switched, if we decide to switch it to, you know, say tomorrow, I mean, to Wednesday, I'm sorry? So can somebody speak to both of those? Thank you.
Sue, that might be in your, in your court.
Sure. I do want to say that I did speak with the Auxiliary Fire Department about generators, and we do have, I believe he said, eight generators. So if, in fact, power did go out at Tucker or Cunningham Hall, we would be able to handle that. So moving forward to Ms. Musto's questions. As far as I know, the Town of Milton has not ever canceled an election. Has it been done in the Commonwealth? Yes, it has. And in terms of getting the communication out, it's my understanding the town doesn't have a reverse 911, but I think we would exhaust all avenues to see if the police or school have some sort of mechanism that we can contact all of our residents, as well as contact Milton Access TV to get that on their radar and notify that. Notify the leaders of the campaigns so that they could get the word out, as well as on social media, any of the social avenues that people turn to. Contact them, our website, any newsletter outlets that we have available to us through our websites, we'd utilize those. If we could, again, prey upon our poor DPW department, but get some of those signs that we could put in strategic locations, notifying our residents that the election has been postponed. That, open to any other ideas that people might have that I'm not thinking of, but those would be my immediate thoughts as to, to how we would get the message out.
And I'll just add that we, I would certainly reach out to the news organizations to ask that we're included in the scroll that everybody knows and knows well in terms of going across the bottom of the lines, in terms of if Milton public schools are closed, but also to include Milton Town election delay, if that's the direction we do go in here.
All right, thank you. Before we go to Mr. Zull, I see Mr. Brandon Burr, who's the Executive Director of MATV, has his hand up, so if we go to you, Mrs. Zull, let's hear if Mr. Brandon Burr has something on that. Sounds like maybe the communication point.
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to say, whatever you guys want to send to us, we'll get it out, regardless of the situation, as fast as possible. I did have one question. I did hear the DPW say there's no trash collection tomorrow. I was, it's Thursday is the day that trash will be collected. Is that correct?
So trash collection will be delayed one day.
Oh, so just Wednesday?
For Tuesday through Friday schedule. So, so everyone should place their vows out the day after their normal day, starting Tuesday.
Thank, awesome, thank you for the clarification.
All right, thanks, Shane. Mr. Zull?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, you know, just a couple of thoughts on this. I, I think whatever we decide to do today, I hope that we can decide to do it unanimously, because I think it's important that the Select Board is, is united in trying to do what's the safest and best option and fairest option for, for the citizens. So that's my hope. I, I did hear Mr. Mello suggested that one of the options was to leave the voting day open, but then also to, to extend it to a second day of voting. And just knowing that there are maybe some people who are planning to vote on Tuesday and may not be able to vote on Wednesday because of whatever their work schedule, and knowing that, that they wouldn't be able to request an absentee ballot because of the weather, I wonder if we should think about having one location that we make available on the Tuesday, and rather than cancel the election, we let folks know that if you are dead-set on voting on Tuesday, we have one space to do that. I know it would, may throw things for a bit of a loop, because it would be combining multiple precincts, but I just want to make sure that we're giving everybody the opportunity to weigh in on this issue, which so many people feel strongly about. Those are my two thoughts. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Zull. I, I didn't interpret what Mr. Mello said to say, say to me that we're going to have voting on both days, but maybe I misunderstood. Mr. Mello, if you could clarify that?
Yeah, no, that, I think you're right. I didn't, I, what I was suggesting was that you could, the board could, or we could propose to the court that the court issue an order allowing the town to move the date from tomorrow to a date certain, like Wednesday, for example, although, you know, I know it's Valentine's Day, you know, that's totally a board judgment call, or alternatively, so you could move the entire Election Day from tomorrow to a different date certain, or alternatively, ask the court to say in its order that the board, the election will be held on a date to be set by the Select Board within X days, like, for example, the Select Board will, within the next seven days, set a new election day, you know? So those were the two kind of approaches that I had in mind. I mean, the court ultimately, I, you know, like I said, the court has broad equitable powers to issue whatever relief it wants, basically, you know, within, within certain parameters, but so I think it's, it's, it's pretty flexible. But no, that's, that's what I meant. I meant to, you would frame the court either to ask, or frame the proposed order to ask the court either to move the date from tomorrow to a different date certain, or allow the Select Board some window of time within which it would set a new date.
Got it. Thank you, sorry for the misunderstanding.
Thank you, Peter, Ms. Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It seems to me somebody brought this up when we first decided the date for this.
Yeah, somebody, somebody, somebody jinxed it.
Sorry, everybody, but this was brought up, and I have two points I'd like to make. One, if this ever happens again, and there is a election, special town meeting that's scheduled in the winter months in New England, I would like to suggest that we come up with an alternative plan from the beginning, because then our townspeople will know what the alternative is, and we won't have to be scrambling at 10:29 in the morning, the day before Election Day. So, so if we could just put that in our backpocket caddy so that we're, we're prepared next time that this happens, God forbid it has to happen again, but, but it is New England, and I did bring up Snowmageddon in a state of emergency, and, and everybody thought I was crazy. So I'm going to go buy a lottery ticket after this meeting. Two other things. One, Boston school, Boston schools were just closed. I just got the notification from the Globe. Have we heard anything about what our superintendent's intentions are for our students? A, and then B, I would just like to put in my two cents that Tuesday is Election Day. It's always been Election Day since I can remember walking to the polls with my mom. So I would just say that if we are going to postpone this, that we postpone it to the Tuesday, next, the next Tuesday available, which would allow, oh, it's school vacation next week. Shoot, I forgot about that. Okay, so the next Tuesday available, which would give people enough time to vote. I'm not crazy about the idea of postponing it to Wednesday. It just seems, that seems off to me. But I'm open to suggestions from my fellow board members. Gosh, school vacation really messed that up, huh? So, oh, well, the snow did. Okay, that's all, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley, Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Look, I'm not, the, the, this is a hard decision to make, because you really don't, feeding someone's ability or right to vote is, is a very difficult decision to make, but my public safety background tells me it's the right decision to make, given that. If, if the fact is that we're postponing a vote because of weather, then that vote should take place as soon as possible, as soon as the weather emergency has passed. So if Chase Berkeley and, and, and Chris, Mr. Hayden, Chase and Chris and them are ready to go back to work, and it sounds like from the, I don't ever watch on the Weather Channel in the morning, for the duration, this ends mid-afternoon tomorrow, they'll have all day and all night, you know, all evening and the night into the morning, that if we postpone this, it should not be any longer than Wednesday. People are expecting to vote, they have a right to vote, and I think that if we push it any longer than that, and it's just becoming a political decision. And this isn't a political decision. This is a public safety decision specifically because of a weather emergency facing this community right. As soon as that, when the emergency is lifted, then if the clerk, and I meant to include, when clerk and this, if they can run this on Wednesday, Wednesday should be the moment. So, thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wells, I tend to agree with you on that. And let me, before we go to Ms. Hayden, and I see Ms. Galvin has her hand up, but I wanted to ask, just to clarify, as the person who runs the election, and having been in touch with the, the Director of Elections from, from the state, is it your recommendation that we, that we consider postponing this to the next day, to Wednesday? Oh, you're on mute, you're on, hold on, Sue, you're on mute.
This will be much more profound than what I originally said when I was on mute. So it is my recommendation that we do postpone, and in terms of postponing further out, we have a presidential primary that is occurring on March 5th. In terms of my perspective, to adequately prepare for that election, postponing it much past this week would be detrimental. We have early vote in person, beginning, not next week, but the week after. We're trying to get ballots out to those that requested them for early vote by mail, and postponing it any further would, would really cause some difficulty in my operations for my office. And having it tomorrow could really complicate it by, I rely so heavily on DPW and their team, and they will be out doing, doing all of the work that they so valiantly do every time we have a snowstorm, that, you know, honestly, elections wouldn't happen without police, DPW, Consolidated Facilities, fire. I mean, every department lends a hand in helping to make sure that all of our voters are able to vote. So given all those reasons, I, I think it probably would be best to pick a, a day this week, and that would be my suggestion, obviously.
Just Mr. Hayden had a point, and then we'll go to Ms. Bradley, and then Mr. Zull.
I just want to answer Aaron's question on school. So we have a meeting at 11 o'clock this morning with the superintendent to discuss the fact that the school will be closing, so I just wanted to follow up on that. to discuss the fact that the school would be closing. So I just wanted to follow up on that. And if the vote is to happen tomorrow, uh, there was talk about the fire auxiliary and the generators. Uh, if, if the vote's happening tomorrow, ideally those generators are set up in place and ready to go in locations today uh, and not tomorrow, just so it's logistically, it's, they're there. Uh, so I just wanted to, um, I'm not sure if, if this can get back to Chief Madden, who oversees those folks, but uh, we should prepare those generators in locations today if the vote is going to happen tomorrow.
Thanks, Chris. Uh, Ms. Bradley and then Mr. Zol.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had raised my hand to ask what the, for my question to be answered about the schools. My next question is, is Town Hall going to be open tomorrow?
Uh, to be determined. Well, we're, as Chris mentioned, we're having an intern operations call at eleven. We're gonna make some plans and decisions based around that. Um, obviously, if the travel will be bad, then we'll wanna um, our, our team to stay home as well. Um, and it also depends slightly on what we end up doing with the election too.
So it seems to me that we're almost jumping the gun a little bit. We don't know what's going on with the schools. We don't know what's going on with Town Hall. No decision has been made in either of those two areas. Um, we live in New England. It does snow. And somebody did bring this up back in December and it was told to the general public, there was, I don't know, I think there was almost eighty people on that meeting, that the election would go on. Um, so I just want to say this is not a political thing. This is what the general public was told at that original meeting. And so I'm concerned about a couple of things. One, obviously, I don't want people to get injured. Um, I was gonna call most of my clients today and see if they needed a ride to the poll just because they're elderly and I was concerned about their safety. Um, but I am, I I'm a little flabbergasted that we don't have all the information yet about the schools, about Town Hall. It sounds like Mr. Hayden saying that we will have a generator at all the places. They'll be able to get things shoveled out and plowed out. And so to me, Mr. Hayden is saying that this is something that consolidated facilities can handle, as did Chase. So I guess I'm very confused, Mr. Chair, honestly. Um, and I'm, I don't I don't know why we are taking this vote before we have the information about Town Hall and the schools. And if the schools are gonna be closed, then that's one thing. If Town Hall is gonna be open, then there's absolutely no reason why this election should be postponed. Absolutely none. Um, yeah.
Just wanna clarify the schools that like part of the, it's, you know, you know, who goes first here? I, I think if the election is happening tomorrow, then we would request the schools be closed in order to enable that to happen. So it's, it's kind of one of those things where that would be our ask um, to them and certainly not our decision. Um, it's not my decision on whether the schools close. So I, I think that's, that's one element and um, so I just wanted to explain why we haven't, there hasn't been a final call on that um, that element. And, and maybe they have made up their mind. I just don't know at this, at this moment.
Right. So it's a chicken egg. I get that. Um, but two things. One, what happens to the people that do leave their house tomorrow and intend to vote in the morning before the snow really picks up? What happens to all those people that haven't gotten the message because we don't have reverse nine-one-one, which by the way is another thing we should think about getting. We don't have it at last, I mean, Mr. Milano said we don't have it. Um, so it's something we should think about getting, A. B, we should have planned for this, but I'm like, I'm gonna get off of that soapbox. And C, I'm wondering if we, if we do postpone this, if the town clerk's office can accept ballots all day today instead of stopping at noon like they were intending to, to make it so that people can get their like Mr. um, Zol said, who were planning on voting tomorrow, like tomorrow, I don't, I mean, I know they have to fill three categories, um, Ms. Galvin, I understand that. Um, but I, I'm just, we have to make this so that as many people can go and that those that were planning on going tomorrow or still have the intention of going tomorrow are not disenfranchised. So I'm still in the very confused camp. Thank you.
So, so two things. I think the clerk suggested uh, that she would accept those as provisional ballots. Um, if, and Sue, you can correct me if I'm wrong on that. Um, and then two, in terms of the timing, um, the, the reason that we would need to move forward quickly on this is because if this is gonna be moved, if that's an option, the only way to do that is to go to court. And so so that's, that, that, that con- constrains us on timing, constrains us, so we don't, we, we may have to make a um, a decision with less than perfect information. Mr. Zol.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, I didn't know if uh, Mr. Hayden had uh, an answer to Ms. Bradley. He, he had his question.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Um, before I go.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Hayden, do you have something?
I was just, I was just on, on our side of the fence, it's more manpower. So in a, in a perfect world, uh, Town Hall and the library would be closed, so we can dedicate our manpower to the polling locations. Uh, so i- if those buildings stay open, you know, I have to, I have to take care of those buildings as well. So uh, if if Town Hall is closed, it helps us maintain the polling locations. That's all I wanted to say.
But I think it's fair to say that if we're having elections, Town Hall has to be open. Is that?
The, the Town Clerk's office has to be staffed and open. It doesn't mean every office in the building has to be staffed.
Fair, fair enough. So the building has to be open for the clerk's office to, to do their job. Uh, Mr. Zol.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Chair, uh, and thanks, Mr. Hayden, for that. Uh, just a quick thought on, in terms of if we do postpone this, um, you know, we have a specific bylaw that requires this election to ha- happen in a particular window of time after the petition is sort of submitted and the discussion happens. So I don't think we could bump this out. Um, uh, obviously, next week is school vacation week, so that wouldn't work. I think the next week, then I think we would be outside of that window. So I think if we do uh, postpone it, I think Wednesday is uh, is a natural day. I'm aware that it's Ash Wednesday and people may be um, observing that holiday, but I don't think there's any observation that would not enable them to go to a poll uh, and vote, but I, I would uh, you know, if there's anyone that has better knowledge of how Ash Wednesday is celebrated, I'd, I'd appreciate that uh, information as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zol. Um, uh, other comments or question, uh, Mr. Wells? Oh, so, so I, so I will observe, uh, my view here, um, and that is that um, our town clerk uh, runs our elections. Our town clerk is our expert in running elections. Um, our town clerk has been in touch with the state expert on running elections. And so I give great weight and great deference to the town clerk's um, uh, view here and recommendation here, um, as advised by the Director of Elections for the Commonwealth. So uh, so that's where, that's where my head is at this point, that uh, that we have, we've, we've gotten inputs from several different sources here, perhaps not all of them, that we need to. Uh, but we're, we're trying to get it as much as we, as much information as we can. But uh, but I'm inclined to defer to the judgment of uh, the person who runs elections here and who is the expert in elections here. That's my thought. Other comments or questions? Ms. Bradley.
And then Mr. Wells. Chair, I have one more. I'm looking at the forecast. So it, so Wednesday's still gonna be really cold. It won't be above freezing on Wednesday. If we're gonna go with postponing this, I'm wondering, um, I'm al- and I'm not a weather person. I'm really not, even though I predicted this. Um, uh, um, if the snow that they're saying we're gonna get is heavy and wet and it's icy on Wednesday, is, does it make sense for us to to do it on like a Thursday? And I'm just asking, like, how, how are the conditions gonna be on Wednesday, since it's not gonna be above freezing?
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. So I think your expert on that is Mr. Berkeley. So why don't we go to, and then we'll go to you, Mr. Wells, but why don't we go to Mr. Berkeley on the prospect for, for Wednesday here and what the, what the conditions would be and what our, what our response would be to the conditions?
Sure. So yeah, it looks like once this storm rolls out tomorrow afternoon, that um, the clouds go with it. We're, we're expecting strong sun Wednesday and that will be to, to our benefit. So we just gotta get through that morning. So what we typically do um, on a storm with this type of a timing is we'll bring in crews again early Wednesday morning, you know, four AM to do all the crosswalks at the school locations and, and any busy areas. We treat those with salt, um, to make them safer for, for any walking population.
And how does that, how does that work with Cunningham Hall? I'm sorry, I just, because that's a private entity, how does that work with Cunningham Hall?
We could, we could take that on. If, if facilities, if facilities, you know, if we're not doing it on Tuesday, we'll take care of it on, on um, Wednesday and we, we're, we're here at six AM, five-thirty, so we'll, we'll take care of it.
Amazing. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Wells.
Uh, Mr. Chair, it's ten forty-six and I know that there's an emergency meeting at eleven, so I, I've listened to everything. We ha- we have to make the decision. I'm gonna make a motion that, based on the recommendation of the town clerk, the state, supported by our public safety entities, particularly DPW director. And I, not something I wanna do, but for the safety of them, I wanna make a motion that we postpone the election till Wednesday, February fourteenth. And to Mr. Zol's point, good thing is Ash Wednesday is not a uh, holiday. It's just a day on the religious calendar where you get ashes. So it's um, we'll be all right there.
Thanks, Mr. Wells. And I, I, I'd like to second the motion.
A motion's been made and seconded. I'm gonna offer a friendly amendment. I think Mr. Melo may have a suggestion. My suggestion was gonna be, the motion would be to seek relief of the court.
Uh, that's fine. I'll take that.
Um, and, and I do wanna hear from Mr. Melo on the motion as well and whether we should make it a little more open-ended uh, to give ourselves more flexibility in the event that there's another event that occurs. Um, so before we do that, so motion's been made and seconded. Um, uh, with the suggestion of Mr. Zol, that um, that it would be useful for our board and our town to have a consensus on this. I think we have, there, there is an, an emergent consensus here, but um, uh, maybe Ms. Bradley and Ms. Musto would like to weigh in, uh, before we hear from Mr. Melo on, on maybe the technical legal piece here?
I just wanted to weigh in and ask how people, like, Mr. Melo, will you let us know what time you're scheduled to be in court and what court you're planning on going to?
Yeah, absolutely. The, the court would be Norfolk Superior Court. I'm hoping, I've requested uh, this morning. I'll, I'll make that request clear in our filing as well, provided the board votes it. Um, that we're requesting a, a Zoom hearing if the court wishes to schedule a hearing. I'll definitely disseminate that and members of the select board, of course, are welcome to attend. Um, in fact, it, it could be helpful. The judge may have questions and um, I, if that were the case and there were reform there, I would clarify that issue with the judge and, you know, ultimately, if the choi- if the court were comfortable with that, um, I, I don't see a problem with that. So um, uh, yeah, absolutely. I'll, I'll keep everyone uh, apprised through uh, Mr. Milano of all that, you know, the developments in real time. So.
Okay, thank you. Cause I would like to attend. I'll change out of my Milton sweatshirt and put some makeup on, but um, but I would like to attend. Um, so thank you on that.
And, and just to be clear, this is a petition. We're not aware of any opposition. There could be some o- opposition that arose, but, but this is, this would be a petition and it seems like if we have a consensus among all the departments um, and the town clerk and the select board, seems to me that would be a persuasive argument for the uh, for the judge, Ms. Galvin.
So I just wanted to address um, Ms. Bradley's um, area of concern that we weren't prepared. So there is nothing in the law that would have allowed us to be prepared for, for this. Um, so this is the only mechanism that is available to us if there is an emergency and this would have been construed, can, is, can, um, can't think of the word now. Um, but so i- it wasn't for, for planning. It was that um, you know, there is nothing in the law that allows for us to do something like that ahead of time.
Thank, thank you, Sue. Ms. Musto.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that it's important if we are going to the court that we do have a date certain. So if we're gonna say tomorrow, that, that we do have that date certain. Um, I think it's also important if we're going to do this for safety reasons too, that we do also, for some people that might just show up at these polling locations, that you have signage there that tells them that it's postponed, because I think um, some people will assume that, but not everybody will. So I think that's another thing that would have to be done and email blast through the town website and on the town website as well. Thank you.
Um, uh, Mr. Zol and then likely from Mr. Melo, who I think had a suggestion on the, on the motion, but let's go to Mr. Zol first.
Oh, thanks. And so just a qu- a quick thought too. Can we, that, you know, if the schools are canceled tomorrow, uh, there's usually an auto call that goes out around school canceling and I'm wondering if we could ask the um, the call to also include information about the election, because that would be really helpful. Thank you.
That's a great idea. That's a great idea. Um, Mr. Melo, uh, did you have a thought on our motion, which is currently a motion to seek relief for the court to move the election, uh, postpone the election until uh, Wednesday, February fourteenth?
Yeah, a quick one. And but before I mention that, I just wanted to jump back to uh, another point to add in response to um, uh, uh, Member Bradley's question about the hearing. It, in the hopefully unlikely event that the court schedules an in-person hearing, it, it would be at the Dedham Superior Courthouse in, in uh, Dedham. So uh, but hopefully it'll be, again, if the court um, needs to schedule a hearing, though, it, it'll schedule it to be assumed. Um, the other point I wanted to add is that um, there may be certain details or particulars that we're kinda dealing with this, um, you know, uh, extemporaneously. So I, the, as I'm sitting here, I think the order would be framed to propose that we extend the date from tomorrow, the thirteenth, until Wednesday, February fourteenth. Polling hours would be the same as were originally planned, seven AM to eight PM, right? Um, with respect to, the one detail I'm thinking of, which we've discussed uh, already this morning, is the absentee ballot issue. Um, Ms. Tassanari said that um, had mentioned that we could accept after twelve PM, if we don't have a court order by then, which I think is, we can safely assume. Um, we could accept ballots, absentee ballots provisionally until five PM and provided that the court allows uh, that time to get pushed from, from noon time to five PM, they could be counted. Um, th- there may be other details, if anyone has any, that they can think of at the moment, uh, to flesh out. I, I, what I'm getting at is it may be prudent to include in the motion, um, some latitude to um, to seek in the, in the proposed order relief with respe- with respect to certain logistical items, um, or details, you know, in the, in the town administrator or the town clerk's discretion, for example. Um, just so in case we missed anything um, we're covered.
Uh, yeah, I, I think that makes sense. And so, so I'll, I'll, so two things. Um, uh, one, uh, in terms of accepting the um, the absentee ballots, which is through noon today and accepting provisional ballots beyond that, isn't it the case that if we were to go forward with a Wednesday vote, then indeed the absentee ballots should go through noon on Tuesday? Even though it's gonna be a bad storm, isn't that, i- i- if we're just kicking it, if we're just moving it a day, uh, wouldn't we extend the absentee ballots? I don't know who that is, but, oh, could be. Um, so wouldn't, wouldn't we, wouldn't we wanna extend the absentee ballots, ballots um, uh, uh, through noon on Tuesday, i- if we're, if we're just moving everything twenty-four hours? That's a, I guess that's a question for Sue and then, and then for Peter.
So based on our conversation with Michelle, given that the uncertainties of the weather, um, she recommended that we put in the um, court order to end at five. Um, so I'm just basing it off of that as opposed to that the Town Hall may be indeed closed. Um, and people couldn't get here. Um, you know, i- it is recommended that people today pass in anybody who has a um, vote by mail ballot to, to drop it off at the um, drop box or come into our office and uh, drop it off. But that would be recommended to get those in today.
Fair, fair enough. Thank you, Sue. Just to clarify, that's Michelle Tassanari, who's the Director of Elections for the Secretary of State's Office, just so everyone knows. Ms. Musto.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm wondering if there's a way, um, I know that somebody had mentioned, you know, like a reverse nine-one-one, but I know that sometimes we've had things with, I, I know like Amber Alerts or, you know, a missing elderly person. We've gotten alerts on the phone about that. Is there a way to do that? Because I think um, that would be very important to let the general public know. I think that would be a great way to do that. Thank you.
We'll certainly use anything available to us. The town used to have access to reverse nine-one-one system through Norfolk County, but they stopped um, carrying that. Uh, but if, if there is a means available to us, we will use it.
Mr. Wells.
I'm good, Mr. Chair. I'll, on the subject right there, I'll. Touch base with, um, Mr. Milano after the meeting.
Oh.
Might have a couple of ideas that he might be able to pursue.
Great. Ms., Ms. Musto.
Just a final quick question, so, um, can people, um, go vote? Even if they didn't get an absentee ballot and go up to town, or it's just those four categories, correct? That's for Ms. Galvin, thank you.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, so, um. It, they do have to fall into those three categories, but I believe it was Ms. Bradley who, or one of the members, I can't remember which member. Who mentioned, you know, that somebody might be out of town on Wednesday. Um, that would be a category now. Um, so. You, you know, you can look at the, the, um. The, the reasons and maybe your particular situation could fall into that category.
Thank you, Ms. Galvin. Um, so, uh, Mr. Mello, I think he was suggesting that the motion should be, um, should allow a little bit more open ended. So it would be a motion to seek relief for the court to, uh, postpone the election, um, to Wednesday, February fourteenth. Um, and to seek other relief, um, as, um, deemed necessary by town council and the town administrator. Is that something? And the town clerk, yes, and the town clerk. Is that what you're thinking, Mr. Mello?
Yeah. I think that, I think that, that, uh, that covers it, provided everyone's comfortable with that.
All right, so I'll offer a friendly amendment to Mr. Wells's motion to, uh, to say that the motion will be to seek relief from the court to move the. To postpone the election to Wednesday, February fourteenth and to seek other relief as deemed necessary by the town clerk, the town council and the town administrator.
I'll follow that, Mr. Chair.
All right, accepted by Mr. Wells and.
Also okay for me. Yes, also okay, thanks.
All right, and Mr. Mr. Zoll, you had your hand up?
I was just gonna ask, um, uh, Mr. Mello, if you wouldn't mind sharing the, uh, Zoom link with the select board for the hearing, just. So, uh, any of us that are interested in attending, and is that something that the general public could also sit in on if they were interested?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
All right, uh, anything else? Questions, comments, concerns? Um, and any, are, are we, are we ready to take a consensus, uh, vote here? Seems like we are, so, um, without any further discussion, uh, we'll go to a roll called vote. Uh, Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Musto.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Mr. Zoll.
Yes.
And Mr. Zoll is yes. Um, all right. Thank you, everyone. Uh, uh, thank you for everything that, uh, you've added to this in the last hour. Thank you to all the town staff for all the, the good input and good advice and, um, uh, on we go. So.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. It'd be a roll call vote. All, all those in favor of Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Mr. Zoll.
Yes.
And Mr. Zoll's yes. Thank you, everyone.